Welcome back to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Again, tonight is Monday, March 25th. Board of Selectmen has just returned from executive session. If you all could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It will. Mr. Jeffries.
If you all please join me, this past week, we had a tragedy in our town. One of Falmouth's town employees, Mark Lemon, passed away while on the job for the Department of Public Works in the Water Department. And if you could all please join me in a moment of silence for him and his family, if you can keep them in your prayers as well. First up this evening is shellfish regulation change, discuss and vote, extension of the scallop season. Chuck, do you want to talk?
Hello, Chuck Martinson, Acting Director, Natural Resources. Before you this evening, on behalf of approximately half a dozen commercial shell fishermen who've requested an extension of the scallop season, late in the season, throughout the winter and then even more later in the season, a number of, small amount, approximately six commercial fishermen have been doing relatively well getting scallops in the area of Vineyard Sound, in front of the Heights and a little bit further down. They had received a request letter from William Strifler, who's one of our commercial fishermen who's here tonight, as well as a few other ones who are here in request of this as well. About six or seven years ago, we had come in front of the board for a similar request because there was a large amount of scallops in the area of Buzzards Bay. And we were successful in both getting approval from the Board of Selectmen and then subsequent approval from the Division of Marine Fisheries. Essentially, what we're asking for is to petition the state to open, to have the season remain open for a month. And essentially, from a biological perspective, this won't have too much of an effect on the fishery, just because the ones that are pulled out, the adults that are pulled out would otherwise die and they've already gone past their spawning years. So it's really a loss of a resource if we can't go out there and have the fishermen harvest those. So I don't know if the board members have any questions, be happy to take them. There are a few other towns that are looking at this, including Manamsha on the Vineyard and I believe one other on the Cape Side. There is a provision in the state law to allow for this.
I guess, maybe you already said this, I was looking at something else. To whom do we make the request?
The request is actually made to the Division of Marine Fisheries and it is made by the Board of Selectmen. With signature of this document, I would subsequently go to them on your behalf and make the request.
So the motion for the board would be to extend the shellfish, pardon me, the scallop regulation period from the current date, April 1st to April 30th, 2013. This is a one-year extension.
It's a one-month extension.
One-month, pardon me, for the year 2013.
I'll move it.
So we have a motion in a second. Any public comment? Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next up, report update, Falmouth Coastal Pond Management Committee. George Hampson, good evening and welcome.
Thank you very much. These are copies for you, if you could pass them along, please.
Wonderful.
Thank you, sir.
And then I have a few extra for you. A couple of flowers, if you'd like, coffee. From, oh, here.
I'm from North Falmouth Precinct 5. And I'm here tonight to let you folks know and the Selectmen know about our Coastal Ponds Management Committee. And we haven't done this before and I apologize for that. Brent Putnam brought it up about a year ago and I was embarrassed, of course. But it's not an easy thing to pull things together to come before you and to have it right. So I apologize for that. And also, the CPA provided funds for us and I should have, we should have done that at least a year ago, to let them know. Okay, so that said, Charlie McCaffrey's going to follow me when I'm through to show you some of the data that we have here, which is pretty nice, this data that we collected, as you'll see. We're not going to go too deeply into it. We'll probably do that at a further time because we just don't have the time to do it here. April Town Meeting, as you know, we have a wastewater management committee that's formulated and they're going to ask for funding. And this is going to be the beginning of a lot of money requested for our sewage treatment. And it's unprecedented in the town of Falmouth, the asking for that much money. But I can only tell you, it's done with a great deal of thought and trying to make it so it doesn't increase the tax rate. I was told that by the Vice Chairman. So that's a good thing. And it's for engineering and soaring of little pond and innovative alternative methods are going to be selected also. So that's what the funding's about. Now, as the estuary recovers, this is kind of an important point, the, it's going to be, as predicted, we're going to have a clearer environment, some of the murkiness is going to go away, and the saltwater quality will improve. We should, in some places, have eelgrass, but don't expect it that the whole pond's going to change over, we're going to have a bed of eelgrass. It's not going to happen. So, and then we're going to have shellfish in areas where we haven't had shellfish before and finfish, different types of finfish that probably are more sensitive should appear. And then other sensitive marine species, which I know and you folks don't know, but I'll tell you what they all are when the time comes. Now, what's next? Well, as a recovery occurs, we are obligated as a town, this is the important part, to protect the achievements that we have seen come. We want to make sure that we don't go backwards, we don't slide backwards. Now, just because we have sewage, it doesn't mean that poor habits won't continue and we should not allow that to happen. Now, that's where the management comes in. If we have a long-term coastal pond management program, we can cut that short and make sure that it doesn't continue. Obviously, we work through the Selectmen, we just don't go out and make an order, because we don't. We go to the Selectmen, we're your committee, and we want to make that clear. Now, further generations, now we're talking about 40 or 50 years, they won't even know that we had a problem, you know? So when they see all this nice water and stuff, who knows how they might treat it? So again, we're talking about citizens' group to do water quality, to make sure we don't backslide, and the long-term management program. I suddenly realized how important this program is. It's exceedingly important because there's no other thing that we have on our committee that will take care of these needs. So, anyway, our needs right now is that we need guidance and approval for Green Pond when the time comes, to touch base with you, to let us know what format we must take to do a management plan. That's the key, a management plan, we have to have input from the Selectmen. And that will not happen tonight, that's for sure. In closing, our immediate problem with the CPM is that we're, with our program right here, is that we're down three members. And right now, we don't have a forum. So that's kind of sad. So I would like very much if we could start that initiating. And the Selectmen can appoint those people. We can bring in names, but we don't have to go any further than that. And then we're down representative from CONCOM and the Planning Board and the Mashpee Indian Tribe. Those are three different, so we have, for some reason, I guess they don't like us, I don't know, but I'm only kidding about that. But we really do have to get some troops, yeah. I want to tell you that, and this is a good thing, that I've learned to better appreciate the Selectmen's time and efforts in solving issues. Because when I went through this, with this coastal pond thing, it was, it's tough, you know, to get all the information and then feel free about going before Town Meeting and just giving a committee report, you know? We didn't know what to say, but I'm ready now. We're going to do that for April. Also, another important point is that we work with people. We work with Craig Frazier, very, very closely with him. Anything that we do that involves moving boats or things like that, we go to him and Chuck Martinson works very closely with him. And we've worked very closely with Barbara Schneider also. And so, I want to tell you about something that's very important to the town of Falmouth. 26 years ago, we decided that we need a Pond Watchers organization to do water quality. 26 years ago, we were the first organization in southeastern Massachusetts, and in some cases beyond that, that did a water quality data collecting. And the people involved in that was Armin Ortons, who had a boat, and we used that boat. Dave Ross from Sea Grant gave us money and we're very, very pleased that David came through with that. And he's always been on our side. Dale Goringer was the key person in keeping it running. She's from Falmouth. And Brian House, they worked together. 26 years ago, that was started. All the programs that you see, the Coalition for Buzzards Bay and Faces have copied that program in some way, but Faces has more information that is collected with meters. But we do it the old-fashioned way. So anyway, that's a very important thing. And so, anyway, the kinds and the numbers of volunteers is going down. Again, you can see that across the board. We have a hard time in getting volunteers for a lot of things. So we hope we can turn that around. That'll be part of my job and also that organization. But anyway, I have a whole thing here about Pond Watchers and how old they are and so forth, but I won't go into that in detail. But it set the guidelines for water quality program in the southeastern Massachusetts and it was one of the first organizations to get EPA approval. That's critical. You have the data, go to EPA and they say, "We can't use your data because you're not approved." We got approved right from the get-go. And the foundation of what we're doing right now, all the soaring and stuff like that, it began 26 years ago. That's when we took the data and we said, "Things are not approving, they're getting worse." West Falmouth, we had the information and we tracked it. So that's another story about Falmouth and I'm glad to tell it. And I love Falmouth, by the way. Falmouth loves you, George. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take an immediate question. If not, we'll have Charlie.
Just a simple one.
Sure.
I've forgotten what ENSAR is. E-N-S-A-R? You have it in your?
Yeah.
What is it?
It's now AECom, Environmental.
You have to go to the microphone, I'm sorry.
My name's Steve Aubrey, I sit on the Coastal Management Committee. ENSAR was purchased by AECom, it's a large environmental consulting firm, so.
What does it stand for? Is it the names of the people? I can't remember.
No.
You're not supposed to.
Environmental something.
Even AECom is just.
But everybody just says ENSAR?
Yeah, everybody, as long as I've been familiar with them, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Charles.
Thank you, George. I'm Charlie McCaffrey. I'm a member of the Coastal Pond Management Committee and I'd like to talk to you a bit about the substance of some of the work that's been done. I believe there's a copy of some NACER attachment. ENSAR was mentioned.
Charlie, if you're going to wander from the microphone, you need to take.
I need to grab it.
Yeah, that's for the folks at home, that's.
You can take it off. ENSAR was the first firm that did some consulting work for us on the development of the Green Pond Harbor Management Plan. They did a Benthic habitat survey, which was essentially looking at the quality of shellfish and eelgrass in Green Pond. They produced, there were more than 100 points where data was collected, but they produced four maps. One map was the existing quality of shellfish habitat. And in, they characterized it as three types, what were they, high, medium, and low-value habitat. They did the same for eelgrass, of which there was very little left in Green Pond, except here. Then, based on the assumption that water quality would be improved and nitrogen would be removed once the TMDL and the water quality plans were implemented, we could expect to see improvements in the quality of shellfish habitat and eelgrass. So they estimated, based on the existing conditions, what would these maps look like if we achieved the reduction of nitrogen that the town is working towards? So on this map, the green is the highest quality, and this is more than it is today. This is if we had better water quality. And it's not a guarantee, but it's as good an estimate as we could probably get at this point. The yellow is medium value and the orange color is low value, mostly in the middle with it. We also looked at existing docks, proliferation of docks, and the conclusion that we made, there's a line on there that shows 100, the existing standard for conservation is you need to reach three feet of water at low tide within 100 feet and there can't be excessive shellfish. The three-foot depth and the 100-foot maximum distance would, for the most part, now preclude more docks in Green Pond. There may be a few that will get approval, but most property that does not have a dock is not likely to meet that standard. So further proliferation of docks is not an issue. We next had a, University of Massachusetts Urban Harbors Institute advised us on development of a harbor management plan. And they produced a substantial report that addressed a range of issues, such as the dock issue I just mentioned, public access, wetlands, invasive species, some of the issues where recommendations come, that we could improve access at the well and preserve maybe modest access, passive access, you know, canoe, kayak, more walking. We need to be aware when state DOT might improve the highway, so we make sure that they improve the connection between the pond so that Herring can get up there. That's one. There's, another issue is how do we, as George said, when we do the water quality, we need to make sure that, having achieved our water quality objectives at tremendous cost, we then don't, through lack of good management of the uses of the area, render the benefits of water quality inaccessible. So if we had too much boating development, too much shoreline hardening, too many more docks, we would reduce the benefits we might get from approved water quality, which will lead to better shellfish, better habitat, better swimming, better aesthetics. So looking at all of this information, we looked at how we can improve harbor management by better control of, particularly of moorings and boating. As I said, the boating, the individual docks, that doesn't become a major issue. What we looked at was a way in which, accepting the existing number of docks, of boats, moorings, which is an arbitrary number, but we didn't want to reduce it if we could, suggesting a plan where the moorings could be more concentrated, resulting in more open water. In also, in looking at this, we began to sense, and this isn't yet shown on the map, that we could talk about three different use areas where our priorities would vary. In this lower part, where there's a chance of significant natural resource improvement, it's already better than the rest of the pond, this area should be seen as preservation. We would not do much, we would not allow many active uses. The middle area around the bridge, where we have marinas and dense boating development, that should be our priority, to maintain that level and density of boating and other activities, including dredging where it's necessary, shoreline stabilization, a variety of things will be allowed here. And in most of the pond, we could categorize it as a marine conservation area, where there's a balance between resource protection and allowance of some more active uses, such as mooney, such as moorings, the docks that are there, et cetera. These classifications need to be further thought about, but I think they could be a model for the town to begin to do something analogous to zoning on its water. So we would talk about areas of a water surface that are either conservation, preservation, or marine, active marine uses. or marine, active marine uses. In implementing this, and we want you to consider, how would we implement this? We had previously identified a whole range of methods that it could be implemented, but we'd like you to particularly consider one approach, since we're only yet dealing with one pond. And that would be to adopt the plan, as we make a final revision of this, as a harbor management plan under town code and as town policy. This would, if you adopted as a harbor management plan under town code, it allows this to substitute for the mooring regulations at Greg's discretion. And it further, if you adopted as policy, in other words, the recommendations as I've outlined, it would do two things. It could increase the town's authority when the state issues a permit under Chapter 91, and it also could provide better guidance for the Board of Selectmen as you make your decisions when you are faced with review of a dock or other wetland permit.
Okay.
Questions? Yeah, that's good.
I'm gonna open up to the questions. Anyone on the board have any questions?
Excellent.
So are you making a proposal here that we would consider?
Not tonight, but within the...
Well, I know that.
That you would, that we would put together a report brief. We have a harbor management plan from the consultant that's a hundred pages. We think we can put together, based on the main points I made, about a ten-page report with maps that you would adopt as a harbor management plan under, I think it's, it's in the mooring regulations, it's the last section. And that then allows the harbor master to manage according to the plan and not necessarily the specific regulations that apply town-wide. And it would also have some guidance that you could use then in making your decisions.
A follow-up question on that. Have you spoken at length to the Waterways Committee itself?
Yeah.
Greg, I mean, is the harbor master, but we have the Waterways Committee that...
Yes. A while ago, we've had a couple of sessions talking with them, and the Waterways Committee appoints one of our members, so that it's meant to coordinate through a member who comes to every one of our meetings.
I'm just gonna make a statement typically on something like this. The more public comment we have before whatever comes to this board, the better it would be.
Yes.
Quite candidly, I don't know if any of us live on this, this waterway, but I'm sure those folks who do have varying opinions on that waterway.
And we did have a meeting in East Falmouth a while ago where we talked about these concepts and got comments. We intend to do that again this summer.
Okay. My suggestion would be to engage the Waterways Committee, not just their representative, but they're really charged with the harbors and that.
In my understanding, this would not be necessarily a reduction in moorings, but a consolidation.
No.
Any clue as to what percentage of moorings would need to be moved to end up, ending up in the fields that you're proposing?
I could kind of, but if you, if you can see, there are circles here.
Okay.
Those are the existing moorings. And then the hatched areas are the areas they would be moved to. We tried to make them close, because often these are accessed by the property.
Absolutely.
So here's three that are strung out, and we think they could be brought closer. Here's a larger grouping that could be consolidated. And it also would be important, one of the issues for making water quality and taking the advantage is, over time, we should think about changing the way the moorings are attached to the Benthic area by not allowing the chains to swing. And there are methods for doing that, and the town is already looking at that closely in West Falmouth and has a grant to do that.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
Well, many, many years ago, I've forgotten how many George might remember, the Board of Selectmen asked the harbor master at the time, who was not Greg, to begin to work on harbor management plans for all the different areas. I know West Falmouth Harbor, Green Pond, Falmouth Harbor, there were plans developed related to moorings, and that's what it was really mostly about, was the placement of moorings and also providing the appropriate standards for moorings, which you're saying now, and that keeps improving over the years. So that part is nothing new, but I think what I'm hearing tonight is, is that there is a connection between the, these waterways and the boating activities and all of that, and wastewater, I mean, and, or the health of the, of the waterway itself. And it sounds to me like we're trying to achieve two things, is to have boating available for all the people who live on the ponds, but at the same time, try to help make these ponds healthy, so that, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes, but also an important thing about uses of the ponds.
Uses.
Boating is one use. When we improve water quality, we want to be able to take advantage of all of the enhanced uses that can occur as a result of water quality. So there'll be more shellfishing. So that's why one of our objectives was to move the moorings a little further offshore, so there's open water along the shore where the best shellfishing might be, or also for kayaking and canoeing. So beginning to think that we want to be able to take advantage of as many uses that cleaner water will enable us to take advantage of.
Which we can't do today, because I know some people who live on Green Pond who just say that the muck and everything on the bottom, it is just so bad that they don't even want to put their boat there, because they have to take it out occasionally and have it all cleaned and brought back again. So having a healthy pond would really offer many, many benefits to people, other than just boaters, is what you're saying.
Right, and that's, will become more and more real as we improve water quality.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'm answering one of your questions in that, letting the people know that live in this area, and what we're gonna be doing is, is meeting with a group of people from Green Pond to get their input, because there's nothing worse than going to town meeting or going before you and then have fifty-five people show up and just say, "This is ridiculous." But the other side of the coin is, we're spending money to clean up the environment, and we can't say it's gonna be like it always has been before. We've gotta have values to this clean area and let it not backslide to something that we don't want. And fertilizer for houses and stuff like that, we've gotta look at all these things so we don't go back to, from where we came.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you forever.
No problem. Thanks, George. Next up, approved request for a transfer of an all-alcoholic common vichy license. Rocky Man LLC DBA Salt Wine Bar and Grill, seventy-five Davis Straits in Falmouth. Before we get going, I'd like to disclose that I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jim. My name's Paul Glenn from Glenn Law Offices, and tonight I represent Jonathan Phillips and Rocky Man LLC. Okay? We've been working with him. He's taking over the business over with his now Mezza up in seventy-five Davis Straits, and he has the lease, he has his LLC, and now we're here tonight to ask for the license to be transferred to him. And all the paperwork was filed, and Jonathan is the only member of the LLC, and he is also being asked to be appointed the manager of the liquor licenses as well. There was, during one of the storms, the electricity went out and there was water damage. They've been working on that, and I think the building, they've been working with the building commissioner, and they know that they have to get an occupancy permit before they can start serving hundreds. So they're working with that. We're asking this board to approve the transfer, and then the building department will make the determination what needs to be done to get the occupancy permit. So Jonathan is very hands-on, has a lot of experience. He's been taking care of his mother, and she had an emergency operation last night, so he asked me to come for him instead. He couldn't make it tonight. Jonathan's wife Jill is here, who will be helping and working at it, and she can tell you about all the experience John has had, and everybody will be tip-certified at it, and he's had experience. And any particular questions?
There are only a couple of things that I'm looking for from the building commissioner, if I could leave that into the record.
It's gonna be called Sea Salt Wine, Wine Bar and Grill.
Okay.
Sea Salt.
Just from the building commissioner, this property has been used previously as a restaurant. Provisions provide, the previous restaurant had a certificate of inspection for the property. The current certificate allows for seating capacity at thirty-six, which concludes thirty seats in the dining room and six at the bar. The new applicant has applied for a change of occupancy for the permit from the building department. Certificate of inspection, the property would be inspected by the building department, fire prevention, fire department, and a new certificate issued. The application indicates that the new owner wishes to increase the seating capacity to a total of forty-four. This would require approval from the planning board, building department, and fire department. The applicant must show that they have adequate parking for the additional seats prior to obtaining approvals from the reference agencies. The owners, after an inspection, can operate using the current seating capacity. Basically, what that says is the seating capacity is set by the building commissioner. This board will not set that this evening. Okay?
And if he's adding seats, it triggers some type of site plan review from the planning board. But Jonathan, I'm hoping, can make that decision not to involve the planning board. At this point, he can take his time later if he wants to expand it.
Right. Also from the police department, from Brian Reed, Lieutenant, I've reviewed the requested queries, the above-referenced application. I found no issues concerned from the department with the request. So all the referrals seem to be in line, and it's, does the board have any questions of the applicant?
Would it be okay if Jill came up in? Or I'm here too, if you don't have any?
Well, I mean, if she wants to introduce herself, we always love to give an ad to someone that's coming into the community and starting something new, especially a transfer like this.
I do have one question for the...
Sure.
Maybe just to describe what the restaurant's going to be?
First of all, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you, Mr. Chairman, Board. Again, I apologize for my husband's absence. We had an emergency in our family, so he's taking care of that, and he leaves his wife to do all the dirty work, so. The name of our restaurant will be called Sea Salt Wine Bar and Grill. It will be spelled with the letter C. Little play on words in that it is Cape Cod, and we are close to the ocean. It will be a farm-to-table concept, utilizing local ingredients, local farmers, and it will feature a lot of new American cuisine, which is basically my husband's fancy way of saying it's American cuisine with French and Asian influences. It will be a wine bar, meaning that we will have a very wide array of wines to really satisfy all different tastes and, more importantly, all different budgets. But we will have a, applying for a full liquor license, so we would like to also feature craft beer and cocktails. Just a little bit about John's background. He's grown up in the restaurant business his entire life. His father owned a seafood restaurant in the Brockton area, where he worked through middle school and high school, and then graduated from Johnson &amp; Wales in Providence, Rhode Island in two thousand and four. He, after graduating, he worked at an Italian restaurant of over two hundred seats in Hingham called Tosca, and then moved to be the executive sous chef at a small French bistro in Hingham called The Square Cafe. So that's really where he kind of got his love of French cuisine and Asian influences. In two thousand and eight, he was offered the executive chef position at the golf club of Cape Cod, which is in Falmouth. A lot of people refer it to as the place across the street from Valley Mead. So not only did he open the restaurant at the club, but he also ran the food and beverage operation, so. And really, this is where he developed just a love affair with the town of Falmouth, just like George, we love Falmouth. So as soon as we saw Mezza come for sale, him and I jumped at the opportunity to try to open up our own business. So over the winter months, he really started developing relationships with local farmers at the farmer's market on the weekends, and he really wants to bring that, those local flavors, local ingredients to the town of Falmouth. It's going to be a very casual dining atmosphere with fine food. We'd love to cater to not just the tourists, but the locals, so we are going to be open year-round, twelve months for lunch, eleven AM to three PM, and then dinner from five to ten, Monday through Sunday. So it's a labor of love for us, for sure. On any given night, you can walk in and have a braised short rib with a hundred-dollar bottle of wine if you wish, or come in and have a burger, a really good burger, with a craft beer. So it's really catering to all palettes and flavors. So again, we will accept reservations. I know a lot of restaurants in the area don't, but we will accept reservations. It's a small place, but we really are excited to get started and excited to be a part of this community, so thank you for your time, and can't wait, so.
Okay. Any additional questions?
I move approval of the transfer of the all-alcoholic common vichy license to Jonathan Phillips, and I guess the company name is Rocky Man LLC. Second.
Motion in a second. Any public comment? Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is approved request for a shellfish agricultural license, Mary Murphy. For disclosure purposes, I own a restaurant that sells seafood, specifically a raw bar and cafe, so I'll put that on my list of disclosures. Mary.
How are you all doing? I'm Mary, this is my partner Nat. He's also involved with the project. Thus far, you guys have a copy of everything that we've submitted to you for a proposal. We've talked with Jen and Chuck and Greg, and I believe our next step is to try to get approval for a survey from the Division of Marine Fisheries. And with that, I kind of think maybe I just let you ask me questions.
I'll open it up to the board.
Well, I just think what we're doing tonight is just simply starting the process, you know, and then it moves from here to the Conservation Commission and on through to the other departments. So you come tonight before us, and we just want to get you started on the process of getting all of your approvals. So I read the documents, and I think it explains very well, at least to me, what they plan to do, unless you want to describe yourself in any more detail what you plan to do.
I think pretty much everything is in the application. I think there's one misprint on the first page of it. I think it's the first page. It says that it's roughly seven hundred yards offshore. I think it's actually more like four hundred yards offshore.
Yeah.
But we, there is a lot of room for us to move offshore, further offshore if need be. So we kind of wanted to keep it there so that it kind of protects us from the weather a little bit more, and it gives us a little bit shallower water to work in, makes things easier for us, but if need be, we can move further out.
And, go ahead.
I have one question. There is a temporary racing mark that's in that area.
Yes.
Are you aware whether that's going to be a problem, or is it going to be exactly in that area?
It, I actually was trying to get in touch with Weatherly Doris before this to find out exactly where the marker is. It shouldn't be, even if it's in the area, it shouldn't, it would have no bearing effect, really. I mean, obviously, there's four more obstacles to avoid when you're racing, but we would also work with you guys. If it was in the, if it was in the area, we could, we can adjust a little, you know, here and there. I just haven't had a chance to talk with her yet, but that was, I had planned on that.
You can, you can contact me, I have the GPS coordinates of it.
Okay. Fantastic.
Any other questions for the board? I do want to say that this application process tends to be long and tedious. And for those folks who have never seen it, there's quite a bit of paperwork and a lot more work before you, and I think you've already done the paperwork part, but the tough part will be dealing with... with conservation and the Division of Marine Fisheries. And I believe, Pat, they do come back before us one more time at the end.
At the end.
So you'll go through the process. We encourage you. This is, you know, Falmouth was a farming town, as we look at the town seal originally, and this is another form of farming that we love to see off of our coastline. Any public comment? Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is approve a request for a transfer in renewal with shellfish aquaculture license, Daniel Pujer. Did I get that right?
Pujer.
Pujer?
Pujer.
Pujer, all right. Again, a disclosure that I own a seafood restaurant, I sell shellfish. Go right ahead.
Basically, we're just requesting a transfer of Matthew Weeks' farm into my name for the future.
Okay. It's important to note, and we've, you know, this is open, town government, Matt now works for the town of Falmouth. And one of the provisions of that, taking that position, was that he divest himself of this operation, because you can't inspect what you already do yourself as well. So this is the step in the right direction, making sure that he no longer has this, the shellfish grant, oyster grant. Any questions from the board?
I wanted to be clear about the extension, the five-year extension. Is that part of Matt, of your original license, or is this another five-year extension?
It shouldn't be an extension. It should be a continuation.
A continuation of the five-year.
Right.
Yeah.
And so this would go till January 4th, 2017, is that right? It's going to start in the 2012?
Yes, go right ahead.
It indicates in the license granted 2012, excuse me, I'm looking for the dates. Yes, it was January 23, 2012, the board voted to grant the license, and that it is for a term of 10 years. And that is on page 60 in our packet.
The first, when you have a new grant, it's five years, and then after five years, you're going to do it for 10 years.
Okay. So tonight, we're going to do this for, we're just going to transfer this, so that this will, the terms of it will remain the same.
Right. No, it's the same, the operation.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Public comment? Do I have a motion for the transfer?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the transfer.
Motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks.
Next up is update state funding on the wind turbines dismantling. Mr. Suso, do we have any update?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We continue to await word from the state. Our status has not changed since our last report. As the board will recall, we were notified of a meeting to be taking place next week, at which a vote would be occurring, so we anxiously await that. However, in the meantime, no additional communication from the state authorities we've contacted.
Anyone else have any comments? I did notice that there was a letter sent in contradiction to the board's letter from someone, a voter and a taxpayer in this community, that objected to the state working with that. I did want to make note that I had never seen the letter, but I got a copy of that letter this evening. And on that letter, it used a position of, it signed the letter saying the Energy Committee. And I surely hope that that letter was signed with the Energy Committee's approval. If you're going to use a board or a committee's stance, that you need that board or committee's approval to do so. And everyone has the right of free speech, but you surely can't go out and misrepresent yourself when it comes to the folks in the town of Falmouth. So I think that's something I just received this evening. I would hope that we could look into it and see whether the Energy Committee itself authorized her to send that letter. If not, I think that's a breach of trust by signing it as someone from the Energy Committee. Yes, Brett?
Mr. Chairman, I would say that you're more gracious than I would be. The fact that the chair of the Energy Committee sent a letter contradicting essentially with the policy and stance that this board has taken, I think, should be grounds for removal from that position. The Energy Committee is an advisory board to this board, an advisory committee to this board, and therefore, they are obligated to bring to this board their concerns and their recommendations. And if they have a position or a stance which they believe contradicts, and I think it's pretty obvious that their stance contradicts the position this board has taken thus far in this process, then they need to come to us first to discuss that. By doing so, by taking the stance that they have done, they have flagrantly disregarded this board's position and this board's votes to date. And quite frankly, I think at least the chair, if not the entire board, should be brought before us, and we should consider removing them.
I haven't seen the letter, so I can't really comment.
Okay.
I would like to make a comment. I've seen the letter. I met with Megan a few weeks ago at her request, with a very cordial conversation about her opinion. However, I'll tell you, when I received the letter, pretty strong words that she has sent to the state, totally opposite of what we were working on after the long WTOP process, which she references in her letter. I'm concerned that, because she did sign it as, you know, the Energy Committee, and I don't know if they're aware of it or not. And I, number one, I'm going to ask through you, Mr. Chairman, that if we find out if they're aware of the letter, if it's there, if they all agree to that position that she's taken. But I, you've been a little bit more gracious than I would, and I agree with the grant, you know, when you appoint someone, and they are in an advisory committee, and we make the decision, you know, the agreement was, that unless I misunderstood it, the WTOP did a lot of yeoman's work. They were going to come back to us with options, and this board, in fact, unanimously picked an option.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this isn't on the agenda tonight, and I realize it's something that has come up, but some of us are not prepared. I haven't seen the letter. And if, I do think that we should obviously read the letter, and I think that you should prepare something for the board to discuss, but I don't think it's appropriate to take it up and make motions without having a fully noticed.
I had no intention of making a motion. Yeah. I had no intention of entertaining a motion. However, I think it was appropriate to bring it up, because we're talking about state funding, and we had a committee that, in this, it was represented that a committee sent a letter contradicting the board of selectmen. I just wanted to address it when we're speaking of it. That's what we can find out. I have no idea whether the committee itself authorized that, so maybe we'd request the town manager to find, just find out whether the committee authorized the letter, or whether that was an individual. I think that's fair. And then we could discuss it at a future date.
Well, I'll just complete my comments by saying directly in the letter, Pat, she is asking the state not to fund what we're looking for, so I'll leave it at that.
I did read that in the paper, but I'm just saying, if you want to take any kind of action against an individual, you really need to notify the person, and.
I'm certainly not proposing anything.
No, I know.
What I'm saying is.
Just, let's not violate the open meeting law.
Absolutely. What I'm saying is the, you know, when this came out, and it became public too, that, you know, we're getting calls and people wondering, what is going on? Do we know what we're doing? Where's our leadership? And, you know, if the wheel's going to fall off the car, let one of us do it, not somebody else.
So, as.
I'll leave it at that, Mr. Chairman.
As we'll proceed, unless someone else has any other comments, I would hope that the rest of the board would have an opportunity to review the letter. I'll try to contact the Energy Committee itself, from the board of selectmen's standpoint, either through the town manager or myself. And if the board thinks it's necessary, we would have, this is an agenda item moving forward.
They do have a meeting scheduled for 9:00 AM tomorrow morning.
They do?
The Energy Committee.
Okay.
And I did not read the letter as coming from the committee, but coming from her as an individual, but did list one of the jobs she had was chair of the Energy Committee. And I think it, I thought that was a little, unfortunately misleading as to whether, it was not clear whether it was coming from the committee or merely from an individual. And I thought that was problematic.
It was right below her signature.
Right.
That's usually.
I'm going to ask that we not discuss this any further. It's not appropriate.
Okay. Well, I think it's, I mean, we don't live in a vacuum, Pat. This is something that came forward, and I think the board needs to address it. We are addressing it in open public forum. That's, we're not violating the open meeting law.
Yes, we are.
We're discussing it in an open public meeting. So we will move forward with this in another fashion. There is a meeting tomorrow morning, you say?
I believe it's at 9:00, posted on the outside wall.
Great. Okay. Thank you. We'll continue to update, folks, as this process moves forward, specifically with the state and whether they're inclined on participating with the wind turbines decommissioning and dismantling, if in fact it has a positive vote at town meeting, and then a subsequently positive vote at the ballot. Speaking of the ballot, I just wanted to make folks aware, sorry, that it's important that everyone know that with town meeting, the way town meeting falls this year, we would have to set the ballot by that, the end of that week. So we would have to have a meeting of this board on that Thursday, probably the 11th of April, because Monday's a holiday, so that backs us into, we'd have to set it by the 15th. So the 11th appears to be the only non, the only work, the business day that we could set the ballot, and we have quite a few ballot items. So if folks can leave a meeting available on, say, 6:00 on the 11th, just on your calendar for that.
Are you taking questions, Ryan?
I'm not taking any questions on what's that.
Well, this point about the state funding.
No, no, this is a report. That's all that is.
Thank you.
Yeah, not a problem. Next up is discuss and vote water filtration process. As the board remembers, we move forward an article through the spring town meeting in regard to the design of the water filtration plant. And with that water filtration design, the board has yet to declare the train, I guess we would say, of which process we want. So does anyone here to speak in regard to? Mr. Jack? Would you like to? The board is in copy of your recommendation. I'm going to open it up to any questions from the board. Mr. Jack's here, I believe the consultant's here as well.
Patrick O'Neill from Teton Howard, yes.
Have any input from the board here? Pat?
Well, having heard a couple of presentations over the last year, at least it's been a year, I think, I think the paper that we received from the Board of Health, the white paper, as you call it, and the recommendations from the consultants and from Ray Jack, I would, and I don't know if I'm going to get the number right, because it's, the option, is it two?
I don't know. It's four.
Yes, but it's the option. Which one is it? Coagulated dissolved air flotation, DAF, ozone granular activated carbon, GAC, chlorine at 47 million, but we are looking for 3.4 million for design.
Yes.
For the design.
Yes.
Of it. And, you know, I've been reading all of the information. You know, you can, in something like this, which is so critical to the town, there's a lot that has been studied over the last several years, not only here, but everywhere, but especially in Falmouth. The Water Quality Management Committee, the Board of Health, has done a really good job in terms of looking at nitrogen, the sources of nitrogen, planning, options, management, all of that going forward. And it seems to me that we will be selling ourselves short if we don't plan to do the one that is going to best meet our needs, not only as we understand them now, but as we are not sure what may happen in the future and what we may be faced with, not only in terms of, did we get it right? Did our, was our planning and were our studies on the mark? And then what is DEP going to do going forward, or what is EPA going to impose on us in the future? So I think we should make the right decision and follow the recommendations of the people who are most knowledgeable and who have worked on it for so long and studied it and given us that recommendation, as I said. So I would, this is a discussion, but I plan to make the motion to move forward with the plan that's recommended.
Doug?
I will make the motion.
I would be leery of going with a train that did not come closest to eliminating the taste and odor situation that certainly are the townspeople concerned about. And my understanding is, in the option of removing the ozone treatment, the downside to that would be, we would not have as a secure taste and odor situation with our water as if we do the ozone.
Yes.
Other comments from the board?
I just have a question, Ray, because I'm getting mixed comments. If this plant was done tomorrow, do we have to pre-treat the water before it goes into the plant?
Essentially, yes.
And what is it treated with? Chlorine?
I'm sorry?
What is it treated with?
At present time, you mean?
Well, no. If the plant was done, we picked this, no matter what option we picked, does the water have to be pre-treated before it even goes out?
Yes.
Because of algae.
Algae as well as.
And what is it treated with?
Under this particular process, the, one of the chemical forms of treatment is ozone. Another chemical treatment that's mentioned in our coagulation is a pre-step for dissolved air flotation. So a coagulant neutralizes electrical charges at the molecular level in order to allow some of the particulates that are in the water to agglomerate and then be able to be taken out by dissolved air flotation. But that's one of the bigger problems that we do have, is the seasonal fluctuations. When we build a plant, the plant has to be able to be operated every day. And during the spring, summer, fall, if we have turnovers, or, turnover's a natural event based on temperature, when water hits 39 degrees, we can have an artificial turnover, which is a result of a storm event. So even coming up on the end of the season, in the summertime, if we have hurricane threats or tropical winds, even heavy nor'easters can efficiently, effectively stir up the pond, and that affects the filters.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Doug?
Can I clarify another question? In the report that you've given us on March 22nd, with the possibility of removing the ozone, the last sentence says that more chlorine would be necessary. That's only in reference to removing the ozone. It's not in the whole treatment.
Correct.
Either way, if we use this one, we're still going to be using chlorine, but far below what we're using right now.
Correct.
If we take away the ozone, we'll have to increase the amount of chlorine from the ultimate, but still way less than we're using right now.
Correct. And there is, there is one more important aspect of the ozone that fits in with the taste and odors. As I mentioned before, the public looks at taste and odors from a perception perspective. It smells bad. It looks bad, it tastes bad. But if you get down to the chemistry of it, then what we have is dissolved organic matter. That's what causes the taste and odor, they are taste and odor compounds. When you put organic matter in contact with chlorine, that's when you form triamethanes, and those are the known and suspected carcinogens. So the point being, if taste and odor compounds get through, and you have to use a higher amount of chlorine, you are creating those compounds.
Go ahead, Dave.
I just, I just wanted to say that I thank you for the answer. You know, after many days of going through this, the white paper from Steve and from Mr. Waterbury, I feel confident that, I mean, far be it for me to be discussing water filtration. I mean, you know, that's why we have the professionals, and I just feel very comfortable with the information. the information and what Pat's motion is. So, I just want to make sure we do it right the first time. Just been in the past, we've done things, I think, that just, you know, haven't worked out. And I just want, this is one we need to really get right, so.
Okay. I'd like to make a couple of comments. And the comment is that this year before us is the design. And the design is three point four million dollars. No matter which train we design, it's roughly about the same amount of money for the design. I believe that the alternative that Mr. Flynn talks about provides us some options still as we move forward. And we have to be cognizant about, the economy looks like it's changing. Hopefully, we've turned the corner. But it still provides us an option if we were to go to make a vote next year to build this in phases, so that we could either incur a cost originally of thirty-six point one million and then still reserve the right to add, because it already would be designed, the additional ozone at an additional seven point five million. So, the board still has some flexibility after this design process. I think it's important that because this board has wrestled with the train, meaning the process, I think it's important that we let folks know that all along, we have felt it was necessary to do something with our water. That it is, it is vital, not only from a state mandate, but we've looked at the potential, and we have had a boil water order in the past in this community. It would be inevitable that if we did nothing, that we would not have something like that again. That it is a very clear possibility sometime in the future that could happen again. So, we need to do something. The question the board has wrestled with, and your group of consultants, is to put together the right process of how to filter it. And I think this provides us, this design provides us still some opportunities, but provides us the opportunity to design the best process as well.
That's a quick question.
Yep.
I was doing some research. The state of Delaware, for instance, if the municipality needs a new school, can go to the local government? And the state actually has, we need a school for a thousand kids. They have plans done, engineering's all done, and it saves the municipality millions or hundreds of thousands of dollars. Is there any program in Massachusetts, if we design a plan that, like, they're already engineered and done somewhere? Or is that not the case? I'm just wondering.
Now, this would, unfortunately with water plants, they really are, and I mentioned, I did mention in the memo, they are condition and site specific, very much so. The water characteristics are extreme, extremely different.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Could we clarify exactly what the motion is?
Look, we haven't had a motion really, that she, you started speaking, so.
I know.
I'm sorry. He had already been, been acknowledged.
Well, I'm going back to my, my motion is to approve for funding for three point four million dollars, the recommendation of the, of the Director of Public Works and the Board of Health. And that is train. The full design for the filtration system known as DAF, ozone granular activated carbon, GAC, chlorine. At forty-seven...
I'll second it, but I won't repeat it.
Not sure I could either.
There's a motion and a second. Public comment. Mr. Finnery?
Mark Finnery, Precinct Six. The day after the last town meeting, Mr. Suso hired the chief operator from the town of Framingham. He started on the twenty-sixth of November. On the fourteenth of December, he was on the computer looking for a new job. He has since gone. He claimed that he wasn't going to put his license at risk at the current way the water plant is run. Any mandate we had from, or fine we had from the state was for operator error. I don't see the city of Boston, or any of the other ones that have a waiver, rushing to throw theirs away. I think we're spending too much for a problem that shouldn't really exist if the place was run properly. And for forty-seven million dollars, I think that deserves a little consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify an item? I was surprised to hear a suggestion that someone was hired from the town of Framingham. I want to clarify, having been most recently town manager in Framingham, I can tell the board that they do not own or operate a water treatment plant. So, I'm not, I'm not certain what that was about.
Okay. Any additional public comment? Anything else from the board? So, we have a motion and a second. Without further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Next up, Wetlands hearing, Toby Lane Associate Association, Parcel Three A. Knockabout Trail East Falmouth, continued from three, four, thirteen. The board, as you are aware, we had this as a continued hearing. And we had requested town council provide us some input. And I can read something from town council. "The office consistently recommends that the board of selectmen not attempt to adjunct the private property disputes. This is the function of the courts, not town boards or agencies. For this reason, the Conservation Commission routinely includes General Condition Number Two in its Orders of Conditions, which reads, 'This order does not authorize or injure, does not authorize any injury to private property or invasion of private rights. The board of selectmen should include the same condition in all special permits it issues under S. two forty dash seven seven of the zoning bylaw.'" So, that's what the board had asked town council to look into at our last meeting.
I have a question for the applicant, if they're here?
Yes.
At your last presentation, you talked, you talked about that the new dock would be about two feet away from the proposed possible property line. If there were agreement about the property line, would you make sure that met the zoning requirements of being outside of the ten-foot border line?
I don't think the zoning bylaw applies to this walkway as a structure. In other words, I don't think we're subject to that ten-foot requirement.
And what's your reasoning for doing that?
It's in the definitions section.
According to our town council, under the zoning bylaw, structures must be ten feet from a property line.
Right, but I think there's a cargo due in there.
Unless I'm reading it wrong, Mike Boselli, I don't want to disagree with town council, but the Section two forty dash sixty-eight talks about setbacks to structures, but it excludes docks, unless I'm misreading it, and I'm...
Well, that'll be up to the building commissioner on our issue anyway.
You're exactly right. It's the building commissioner that's going to issue the permit.
Yep.
Excuse me, I have another question.
Sure, Pat.
Is the plan that you presented to us last week the final plan and the actual plan by which, that the dock will be built as, according to that plan?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, because I just want to point out that if there is a change, any change at all, in the ramp or the dock, and if we approve this plan as it is designed here, and if there's any change in it, then you have to come back to the board for a review, and a review of a change in the plan.
I would agree with that, and I understand that.
Okay.
And that's, and I think what Mrs. Flynn is speaking of, even if you did an administrative approval for the Conservation Commission, you would still need to come back to this board if you changed the plan.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared. I would make a motion that we approved the plan dated in March twenty-three, twenty-twelve, revised December twenty-six, twenty-twelve.
Motion, do I have a second? I'm going to get there. Do you have a motion? I have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. For discussion purposes, yes. Whoever would like to speak. Kevin?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here with Arment Law Firm in Falmouth. I'm here tonight with Mike McGrath, as I stated in the last hearing. My office represents Blair Ames, Betty Wright, and Alice Bowler, the trustees of the A B and B, Reilly Trust, and the owners of the property of budding, the association that is, has the property line in question. I think Mr. Duffy, I think the board, I think even the applicants are absolutely correct when they say that the board shouldn't be determining property rights. That's not what we're asking. We're not asking that the board determine the property rights. What we're asking is that the board acknowledge that a dispute exists, that the permit should not be issued because of this dispute, because we're infringing upon the rights of others. Now, we talked about what's in the Conservation Commission condition, and it says that it will not allow for the injury to property rights to others, but this does allow for the injury to property rights to others. The Ames family simply asking that this be put aside until a determination as to where the property line is is reached out by agreement of the parties or by a determination of the court. The board has indicated permit, that the permit, if allowed, the Ames family would have the right to appeal this, and they would. But that's a very tough burden to bear. Appealing a special permit is very difficult, as you well know. And appealing it up the chain doesn't guarantee that there's a redress of the grievances that are being settled by the family. It seems to me that allowance of a permit today is only rewarding bad behavior in the past, because, yes, the dock exists, but it shouldn't exist where it does. And it's always been a temporary structure, and now we're making it a permanent structure. The Ames family's made repeated overtures to the association to try to resolve this. These overtures have gone ignored. They've been unresponded to. And we've tried to resolve this issue. We've tried to resolve this without getting the town involved and without having to come to the special permit. But our overtures to the, to the association have just been ignored. So, here we are today, asking that you not issue this permit because doing so will harm the Ames family. I know Mr. McGrath has some points he'd like to raise as well.
Dear board members, dear board members, about twenty years ago, I filed an article for town meeting to basically do away with the special permit, because I said it was often a rubber stamp. But the people spoke, and they wanted you to retain the power to protect our weapons. I'm going to hand you pictures. The pier has been built. I gave you two pictures. One is a blow-up of the stairs, and one is a, is one sheet of paper with four pictures on it. My client testified last time that he put this pier in over and over again on a seasonal basis. Now, it's been installed. I went down to the building department, and I said, "Has or was a building permit issued for this pier?" And they, they could not find a building permit. So, I look at this as that there has been a violation of the building code and a zoning bylaw. And then when I look at the zoning bylaw, there is, there is such a thing as a community dock, which under the bylaw is a pier that's erected on open space that's been approved by the planning board under a planned residential development. There's also a provision that as a principal use in a residential zone, you can have a common pier. But the common pier has to, if it's a principal use, it has to be on a lot. You don't have either a lot here. You have a set-aside parcel that was set aside a long time ago. I do not believe that you should approve this special permit. One, it's built. Two, it was built in violation of zoning. Three, it was built without a building permit. And the fourth thing is, I don't see how it can be built without some kind of zoning relief. So, I'm going to give you one copy of this. I just gave you a copy of the subdivision plan. It shows the word park. It shows a little road called Nom Knocket. Nom Knocket actually crosses the lot in front of it. If you bend to the side, it's blocked off with a no trespassing sign and a cable across it. So, I would think that there's a combination of factors here that you ought to deny this pier. The other point is, no matter what, it's an intensification of use in front of my client's land. An intensification of use of a structure that shouldn't be there without some kind of zoning relief. Thank you very much.
Can I?
Go ahead.
I guess this has already been in front of conservation, and, you know, we're just, like, ten minutes ago said, "Well, you know, the building commissioner will not issue a permit if he finds out it's violating anything." But if this is already up, does this mean that the building commissioner will not be called in to go over it again? And I guess I'm a bit confused now, knowing that this dock is, this is already up.
With all due respect, I think that the opposition to the permit is intentionally trying to confuse the board. This dock has been in existence for forty-seven years. The reason the association is seeking the permits that it is is because it wanted to engage in some substantial repairs of the structure. And the association determined it would be easier and better, not only economically, but for the structure and for the environment, if they just simply replaced the old dock with a new one.
This is certainly not forty-seven years old.
It's been repaired over time.
And this is tieback? This is within the past three or four years of rebuilding?
It's definitely been repaired over time, but this structure has been in existence for forty-seven years.
When, when you make modifications, even just, to you, Mr. Chairman. What permits are required when you make a modification? And has the building department been involved in this, is what I, or the conservation, whoever, I don't know. I'm asking.
I don't know the forty-seven-year history, but what I can tell you is, in my opinion, a minor repair does not require a permit. A modification would. And that's why we're before you, because what we want to do is, we want to replace the old dock with a new dock.
Brett?
For the board's edification, I've mentioned it before. I was a member of the Conservation Commission for a full term as a full member, and for a year as a part member. I can tell you, looking at these pictures, this is not a newly constructed dock, and this is not something that the Conservation Commission would have permitted. This is something consistent with the applicant's representative, that it looks like it's been repaired or hastily thrown together in the past. To suggest that this is already built per the Conservation Commission's permit, I think is misleading, and I agree with the counselor. I'd like to remind the board, council, town council has suggested, or stated in his latest email to us, and he stated this previously to the board, that we should not be trying to address legal issues regarding property rights. And yet, that is what the applicants, or the opponents of this particular plan are trying to get us into. They're trying to have us look at this from a property rights perspective. And I would remind the board also that when we saw this last, I did pose the question to the op, to the... to the, to the property owners who are in opposition to this, to their, to their representative, excuse me. Regarding the, the question, and counselor, perhaps you can give me the appropriate term, squatter's rights, I think it's...
Adverse possession.
Adverse possession, thank you, sir. So, they've already testified that this dock has been here, whether it's seasonal or not, but it has been here for forty-seven years. And yet, the, the opposition, that their lawyer didn't want to talk about adverse possession. I, I don't think you can have one without the other. If you want us to talk about this from a, a property rights perspective, I think adverse possession might be something the board would need to consider. But then I go back to town council's recommendation that we avoid this entirely. The question, I think, before us is not whether the dock was here, whether it wasn't, whether it should be here, whether it shouldn't. It's simply a question of, does it meet our standards? And do we feel that it can be permitted? The legal questions, while I understand the, the questions that are being raised, they're not for us to decide, and yet we're being asked, we've been asked, and now we're being asked again, to get pulled into these legal questions about whether this has been built or rebuilt, and whether it should be built, and whether the building department has a permit or it doesn't have a permit. Folks, there's a process for all of this. If this is not a simple repair and it has been built in violation, then the building department can be called, the inspector can go down there, match it with their records, match it with the conservation records, and make a determination as to whether or not this is a violation. It is not our job to determine whether or not this is a violation. And as much as, and I've seen it before, and we've seen this on a regular basis, we are the board of selectmen, and a lot of people come to us and ask us to redress their grievances. In reality, we are not vested with absolute authority, and certainly this is a perfect example of, we have a limited role here and a limited amount of authority. Government is built that way. We have, there are different departments, there are different roles, and it is intended so that there's no one individual or one group that has all-encompassing authority. And while this does on occasion, and I imagine that those folks who are in opposition to this are probably a little frustrated by the fact that there are differing roles in different parts of government, there are reasons for that, and that is to ensure that there is no one branch of government that can become tyrannical and overthrow and so on and so forth. My point to all of this is that we're trying, they're trying to drag us into arguments that we do not have any control over, that we should not be making any decisions about. I think we should focus on the questions that we have authority over, and the legal questions about property lines, about whether this is a properly permitted structure, which I can tell you, this is not what the Conservation Commission would have permitted. So, to suggest that it's already being built is outrageous, to say the least. Doug, thank you.
I take Mr. Putnam's points very well. I would move approval of this, but I would ask that the two councils figure out a way that the neighbors could actually talk to each other. To have one council saying, "We've been ignored in this," troubles me greatly.
Well, actually, if I may interject, I had a number of points, but seeing where the board is gonna go, I'm not gonna make them, but I would like to address that one. I disagree with the characterization of ignored.
Okay.
We've actually had substantial conversations back and forth.
Great.
We just haven't reached an agreement, and there's a big difference between that.
Absolutely, and that's fine. Thank you.
And, and I'd just like to follow up on what Brett has to say. This board does have certain rules, and we have to understand where those rules may, may be. We specifically paused and made sure that we were doing the right thing by asking town council where our, where our, you know, our authority lied. And our authority is not to settle disputes between two property owners. Our, our authority is to permit something. If this was built just recently, I, I see that, I was just looking through the record, and it was on, in February of two thousand and thirteen, one of the last correspondence from the Conservation Commission. If this was built since February thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, I'd be really kind of amazed. So, what I'm saying is, if it was built erroneously, and if it was built not according to their standards, what we're approving here will be subject to the inspection of the Conservation Commission and the, our environmental folks here in this town. So, I don't, as much as I understand that both parties have a dispute here, this is not the place to settle that dispute. We're not, we're not set up to be able to do that. Anybody else? Pat, did you?
No.
Okay. You sure may, okay. Last thing.
I certainly meant no disrespect to Attorney Wall in saying that it's been ignored. He's been more than responsive to me when we've reached, reached out to him. However, there has been, we've made offers that have gone, I won't get into the negotiation, it's not, it's not relevant to the board's decision, and I apologize. Responding to Mr. Putnam, with regards to adverse possession, the board can't claim adverse possession, because the board doesn't own the property. However, two of the conditions of adverse possession are continuous usage, which seasonal precludes, and exclusive, meaning they would need to keep my clients, my, the owners, out of the property. Those are two things that have not been done. There is no claim for adverse possession. I apologize if the board feels that we're trying to have them settle the dispute. We're simply saying that this, this decision should not be issued until the dispute's been settled by the parties. Thank you.
Did you have one last thing, Brett?
Yes. What I wanted to say is what, is that I've examined the aerial photographs that are taken in the March of every year, and that structure doesn't appear. So, my client tells me it was constructed in two thousand and eleven. So, for the, I want the board to consider that, that's significant, that my, you heard testimony was taken in and out, and now I've testified that I've looked at aerial photographs over many years, and it did not exist.
Can I ask one last question?
Sure.
Was that brought up when you apply, when the applicants applied to the Conservation Commission?
No, it was not brought up.
And why? I'm talking about you, you folks. I mean, you had an opportunity to comment at that time.
I wasn't hired to comment at Conservation.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, there's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most?
No.
So, it is denied three to two. Pardon me, three to two. It has to have a supermajority of four votes. Okay, next up. Steamship Authority, Skating Lane update. Good evening, Mr. Marshall. Good to see you. I'm sorry to keep you out this late.
I'm still awake.
All right.
Let me just take a minute to this. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to bring our new plan to your attention. We met last week at the request of Heather and Julian with the police chief, the fire chief of the Department of Public Works, and our engineer, the Steamship Authorities engineer, and Mr. Lamson. And we had a very productive, constructive discussion regarding phase one of this enormous project that we've undertaken, which was precipitated by the Thomas Landers purchase, which will ultimately take us to two thousand and fifteen. Before we've completed the project, the folks that we've purchased the land from on Thomas Landers Road had an extended period over which they could vacate the land and move, move their business or close it at that decision. They were incentivized to move quickly, although they've not been able to do that, which will ultimately take us to two thousand and fifteen. But here is phase one, and let me acclimate you. Phase one, off Palmer Avenue, the skating rink was here. The skating rink is gone. The contract has been awarded to Lawrence Lynch to redo the surface of this parcel that included the skating rink, to ultimately give us what we think will be two hundred more spaces or so. There's been discussion about five hundred spaces, there were discussion, there was discussion about no additional spaces. It looks like there'll be somewhere around two hundred, depending on how it stripes and all those other details, but there will be some small additional amount of, of traffic. To put it in perspective, the turnover in the lot, the entire lot, leads us to about three days. There's a three-day turnover. So, two hundred additional spaces, turning over, over three days is gonna be insignificant. It'll be a rounding error, nobody will notice additional traffic based on those two hundred spaces. Now, to show you what we're doing, we're taking Skating Lane, and Skating Lane now has been the exit. Skating Lane will now be the entrance and the exit. The existing entrance here will be converted to bus traffic only, and it will be pretty much disguised so that it won't be available to folks that are used to using this as an entrance. It'll be all, there'll be plantings and all kinds of, of, of issues that will allow us to pretty much conceal the entrance, and only with a bus clicker and a bus entrance pass will they be able to get in there. So, this will be the entrance and the exit. There will be four lanes of traffic. The four lanes of traffic, as we discussed them last week with the public safety folks, were going to be of equal size. The fire chief, in particular, was concerned, I think we were at twelve feet, were we at twelve feet? We were at twelve feet on each of the four entrance exit ways. We've taken one of them and made, made it fourteen feet, so that there'll be now a fourteen-foot access, and it'll give the fire chief plenty of room for mirrors on both sides and address his other concerns regarding width. The other three lanes will be nine and a half feet, which will be more than sufficient for every other vehicle that will be using it. There is also one lane that will give us the option of using it in or out, depending on time, so that we'll have flexibility. But the main issue regarding access and access for safety vehicles in particular was that twelve feet that we have now made fourteen. To give you an idea of the safety concerns that were addressed, this now exists as a pass-through to the hospital. If anything were to happen at the corner, at the lights, or on Turhune, there would be no comfortable access to the hospital. So, this has been available as a, as a opportunity for emergency use. We will be maintaining that. In fact, it will be a straight shot right up through the property. There are two gates on the property. One gate is here, and one gate is on the other side of our parking on top of the bike path. This is the bike path. We have parking, and you may, if you're familiar with the property, you know that there's parking, the Steamship Authority parking on the other side. There's another gate at the far and far western end of that pathway. The, the fire department and the police department have a key to a lockbox which opens both gates, so that there's only one key necessary in case of an emergency. But that will also be open and clear. Bus maintenance facility, we'll be moving out of here, although that's over on the phase-two side. We'll be taking the bus maintenance facility to a parcel that we've recently purchased adjacent to the Thomas Landers big four parcels that we took over two years ago, that we bought two years ago. So, there won't, there won't be any significant effect to traffic patterns. Our major concern in engineering this, and Heather and Julian were also most concerned, as was Kevin at one of our meetings with the emergency situation, and we think we've addressed that sufficiently. I don't know that there's anything else that I can talk to you about tonight. I do have another plan with me, although it's not necessarily part and parcel of this, which shows us the planting plan, and there'll be buffers planted alongside the bike path on this side, so the bike, the bike path will not have visibility to the parked cars, and we'll make it as pretty as we can, this whole area. By a retention area is, was a concern of Conservation. We've addressed their issues. Brian Curry, when we met with him early on, had some concerns over this particular spot. We've addressed his concerns, so everybody should be happy. I do have a couple of other issues that, as long as I'm here, I'll, I'll brief you on, but...
Does anyone, anyone have any questions about this, this first phase here? It's important to note that all along, even when the Falmouth Youth Hockey owned this facility, this was our emergency means of egress to the hospital, and we're happy to note that the Steamship Authority, after purchasing that property, is gonna continue to make sure that we have this alternative means of egress, both to and from that hospital in case of an emergency. Anybody else? Yes, Pat?
I was gonna say, Bob, I think it's a really good idea to move the entrance to the facility further up, because I'm sure the line of sight must be much better for traffic when they leave the traffic light at, at the hospital lights there, to be able to see it. Now, I mean, I, I use that almost every day now, and, and even when I come around the curve, sometimes I'm not sure that, I can see why people would be unsure where the entrance to the parking lot is.
This also, Pat, gives us a terrific opportunity to redo all the signage.
Right.
So, you know we have that photo cell sign that's further up.
Now, don't you think that people who are not from here, have never been here before, they drive to Falmouth, and they pull in to get a ferry, and they see a sign that says "Skating Lane"? I mean, don't you think they're gonna wonder why it's called "Skating Lane"? But I'm not saying you should change it, because I think it's great for historical purposes. But I'm sure they would wonder why they're going up a little lane called "Skate".
Well, maybe we'll put up a big sign that says, "This used to be the skating lane".
And does anyone else have any, just go ahead, Doug?
I have two, one trivial one. Is there gonna be still a curb cut to the mobile park, mobile gas station?
Well, we're talking about that. That's an enormous curb cut, as you know.
Right.
And they're still in the discussion stage. This, Julian was concerned about this jog here and then working with that, although I don't know how much, given Bilbo's, you know, involvement here, we're gonna be able to do. David probably is more of an expert on this than I am over his past life, but the curb cut is an issue, and we're still fooling with it.
My other question is, I'm not sure if you can even answer this one, I just would be concerned with a left-hand turn out of this lot onto Palmer Ave, when it's almost a blind corner going to your previous entrance. That we're coming out of there, taking a left, heading north. That traffic coming around the corner where your hand is right now, that can be a tough corner.
Well, I don't, I don't know that it would be any more difficult coming out of here and going left, but because we've, we've always come out of here and gone left. This has been the exit.
For the skating?
For skating lane.
Right.
And, and the bus, and the Steamship Authority exit.
Okay.
This has been the exit, this has been the entrance, and this has been the exit.
Okay, so that's not...
So now, we're just making this more efficient and, and logical.
Okay.
I just have one.
Sure.
Just one question, Bob. The old entrance, that's just gonna be for bus traffic?
Yes.
In and out?
Uh, yes.
Because I just have one question for you. You think, I'm sure you know buses coming out of there, taking a right to head to Woods Hole generally have to go into the northbound lane, because they're so close to the, is there something eventually gonna be taken into consideration that maybe a new design, where they're not having to hug the right curb, and they go way out? There's been a couple of close calls, I just thought, maybe we're looking at it.
We've, we've discussed lots of different things, including maybe talking to the state about putting a light in there that would be, you know, that would be driven based on the number of cars, a camera, Julian seemed to be more knowledgeable about it than, than me.
I actually think, though, because when the buses come out, they're so close, where the old Grossman's Building used to be, they have to, but if they come out a little more to the left, they wouldn't have to. So, I, maybe something in the design in, in the parking lot. So I, maybe something in the design in the parking lot.
Well, that, I mean, just to make it a little wider, would allow them to swing tighter.
Well, you got, yeah, you got that big tree there, so if the buses come out a little bit more to the left, I just thought I'd bring it up.
We'll certainly take a look at it.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board on this phase one? What else do you, you said you had some other things you wanted to talk about?
You want to give me two more minutes, or you want me out of here?
No, I just wanted to say that I know you have a phase two, and I just wanted to make sure that we continue to engage the folks here at Town Hall as we move forward on the phase two.
Definitely.
Okay, great, thanks.
The other thing I thought I would mention tonight, as long as I'm here, is that we are still very much engaged in this vessel sewage pump-out facility project. It will be a terrific project once done, at a cost of about $3 million. We have two boats outfitted, we have seven more that will be done over the next 18 months, so we keep climbing on accomplishing that process, but we're getting there. The bus maintenance facility, I mentioned to you, that's moving. We are in the very, very early stages of feasibility study in connection with the Woods Hole terminal. It's a multi-stage process. The state designer selection board need, make the decision as to who is our point person, or point persons, or point company for the project. But we're about to approach phase one, develop study schedule and narrative of design services, data collection, project-specific, and dealing with our Woods Hole neighbors and all of that kind of good stuff. But expect further updates as we go along, that will be a very, very significant project. We'll be redoing slips, we'll be making those more efficient, lots of stuff. Three ferry slips, longer transfer bridges, new ticket office, waiting area, staging area for vehicles and buses and trucks, passenger waiting shelter, a bus terminal kind of thing that will make it more convenient and efficient. So all that stuff is going. I'll give you the results of last year's financials. Also, one more year with no assessments to the town. We earned $2.1 million. The Steamship Authority, the number is, I think it was 2.1 or 2.2 million dollars. A million and a half dollars off of last year because of the cost of oil that went crazy, and we had some maintenance issues that were unanticipated, which will just flip from one year to another most often. But it was another very successful year. Traffic statistics are most interesting. Passengers between Woods Hole and Martha's Vineyard were up 2.5 percent, almost 55,000 passengers, on a base of 2.3 million, 2.25 million. Hyannis and Nantucket, up 36,000 or almost 7 percent. Those numbers bode well for weather and economy. Truck traffic, automobile traffic was up between Woods Hole and Martha's Vineyard about 2.6 percent, but truck traffic between Woods Hole and Martha's Vineyard, which we're most sensitive to, all of us that live in this beautiful town, was down about 1.6 percent again. This has been a steady decline since 2007, the truck traffic has just, so all kinds of reasons for that, including the economy, construction, restaurant business, and all that stuff is collateral to having that truck traffic go down. And $355,000 in embarkation fees to the town last year, 3.1 million in embarkation fees since this program started. Total Steamship Authority payroll was $29 million, 9.6 paid to Falmouth residents. And I thank you for your time.
As usual, thank you for your service, we appreciate it, Bob, and keep us in the loop as we move forward on phase two.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. Anybody else have any final questions? Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Yeah, it wasn't too bad, was it?
It wasn't too bad. Just half hour past my death.
Next up, approved request for new carbon virtual license, Supreme Pizza, 147 T-Ticket Highway. Good evening, how you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, President-elect. I'd like to introduce ourselves, my name is Panayot Zrakas, and this is my cousin Tony. We've been in this pizza since the day we were born. Our fathers used to use, to own pizza places around the area, Massachusetts. We still own a pizza place in Matapoison, so we are related with George and Harry, and we're planning to take over the pizza place. Nothing's going to change, everything's going to be the same, all the recipes.
Very good.
Which, I'm sorry, I was going to ask you, which one in Matapoison?
Next pizza, next homemade pizza.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
Move approval.
Motion?
Second.
Is it a second? Any further questions, any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next up, number 12, discuss and vote bike routes signs. Is that you, Peter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Pete O'Connor, the town engineer. The Cape Cod Commission and the RTA was going across Cape Cod, and they were looking to bring more connectivity with the bike path and with the bicycling across Cape Cod, to be able to go from basically the bridges down to P-Town, Province Town. And what they were doing is, as a phase one effort, they were looking at putting up bike way signs, the bike route signs, the typical ones that we know of, the green signs that say bike route on it. We do have many of them in town, a lot of them are, they're either old, or they're different colors, there's some blue color ones, there's some yellow colored ones. So the plan is, is that the RTA would fund, per town, a number of signs to fund and install the signage. Falmouth already has an existing bike route, what they're looking at doing, it's from Surf Drive to Shore Drive, down Clinton, up Scranton, across Robbins, down Falmouth Heights Road, Falmouth Heights Road to Grand, to Monat, up Davisville to Route 28, across Davisville to Meeting House, Meeting House Road, down Crocker, over to, down Meeting House Road, over to Old Barnsville Road, and then north would take you up to the Mashpee Town Line. So what they're trying to do is, they're trying to replace the existing signage that's out there, which is not very many, it's several signs, and they're trying to replace the signage. Actually, I have a list of the signage, there's 26 signs that they'd like to reinstall. With doing that, it'll all conform to the MUTCD, the Manual on Traffic, Uniform Traffic Controls, 2009. What they try to do with these signs, there's different signs, most of the signs would be confirmation signs, it would just be a green sign, looks, that shows, that says bike route on it, and it'll be at all the main intersections, it'll be just basically the main route signs. The only difference with the signs that you might see right now is it has the little Cape Cod emblem on the bottom of them. And then other signs, if they're at an intersection, it'll say either right or left. So that's the areas where they're looking at to be able to put those signage, and it'll all follow the MUTC standards when you come to the signs. When they put these signs up, those confirmation signs, they look, they try to be a mile, half mile to a mile apart, going on the bike route, so it'll all connect from the bike path. So that's basically what they're doing. That'll take it from Falmouth to the Mashpee Town Line, and then Mashpee will take it to, into Catuah, and then Catuah will take it over to Barnsville, what have you. So the biggest part of this is they're trying to keep them off of the main roads, off of the Route 28s, so.
Just a couple of notes that I wanted to make sure the board was aware of from the Traffic Advisory Committee. The Traffic Advisory Committee recommends the CCR TA be permitted to install the signs in existing bike routes with the following conditions: there's no cost to the town, there are no signs attached to a stop sign post, there are no more than two signs of any type of, any type affixed to a single sign post, and then number four, where possible, the signs should be in the opposite side of the intersection, with the sign facing the approaching cyclist. Anyone else?
Just a question, are there changes to the bike route, or is this just defining the bike route?
It's defining, the bike route is already there.
It's already established.
It's already established, it's the Surf Drive to get up to, over to Davisville to get up to Old Barnsville Road. It's already defined, it's just the addition of bike routes. And now that we had finished the north end of Davis, of Old Barnsville Road, it's more bike-friendly right now, or more entomoral-friendly, it's wider, wider land.
So will they use this all the way to P-Town? Because they're working now on the connection from the, from the mid-Cape all the way down to Province Town now.
What they're trying to do is, this is, there's going to be several phases of it, this is the phase that'll have the bike path signs, and they're doing it across Cape, they're trying to make that connectivity. There will be another phase coming up where they're going to be looking at the share the road, the share the road signage. If you look at, if you go to different towns and you look at the way they have the share the road signs, there's multiple ways that they show the share the road, so there's multiple signs that designate that, and I think what they want to do is, they're going to want to bring that into either conformance with the MUTCD or decide on the signs that they want to use.
So Peter, the color has changed too, the signs, if I'm not mistaken, they're now green versus blue?
Yes, yes. When they did the Shining Sea Bike Way, the phase three, those signs were green and had the bicycle on it, they were green. I know of, well, I know of one location that is blue that's still up, and that's at the Robbins Road at Falmouth Heights, there's one area there.
I happened to see that the other day, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, and as far as bikers, you don't see it, it doesn't blend in, you're not looking for a blue sign, you're looking for a green sign. So what they'll do is, the existing signage will come down, if they can salvage them, they will, but these are going to be all the new green signs, and they conform to the MUTCD, they'll have the retroflectivity, and we'll be able to conform with that.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
And I did go through the Traffic Advisory Committee a couple, I think the last meeting a month ago, so, and when they were coming up with comments, and it's all agreed upon.
So do I have a motion?
The bike route signs and locations as listed on the pamphlet we already have?
Do you want to add the conditions of the...
With the four conditions that Peter has listed.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thanks, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Next up is approved minutes of the meeting of March the 11th, 2013. Anybody have any? It was a little bit of a question, and I think we solved the question about the order of articles.
Oh, the order of articles? Oh, yeah, I saw that. I didn't even notice that when I went through. No, I would move the minutes as printed.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to clarify, we're talking about the minutes for the public session?
That's correct. So a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Next up is...
Executive session.
Executive session minutes.
I would move approval and not to release of the executive session minutes of March 11th.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, we'll move to summary of actions. Number one, approve application for secondhand dealer's license, Falmouth stamp and coin. Number two, approve request for a wedding permit, Falmouth Heights, Downing, Fanning, 6/22/13. Hold that, please. Approve request for a wedding permit, Chappacoye Beach Parking Lot, Scanlon on 10/12. Approve request for a special event, Marina Park Band Shell, East Falmouth Elementary School picnic on 6/21. Like the hold number five, number six, and then number seven is approve, instar petition to install four underground conduit, one four-foot underground conduit, 19 Blair Lane, and then number eight would be a hold. So we're looking for a motion for number one, number three, number four, and number seven.
Move approval.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, approve request for a wedding permit, Falmouth Heights, Downing, Fanning on 6/22. The reason I held this is because it could be outside of the Board of Selectmen's policy if this were the opening day, and just Hopper happens to be here, so I'll let him speak about it. He's not quite sure whether this will be opening day, he also believes this might not necessarily, he can't say no.
On Hopper Beach Superintendent, this wedding, as the chairman said, we're not sure what day will be opening, but let's assume the worst, and assume that we open on the 22nd.
It's 90 degrees.
It's 90 degrees. This wedding will have no impact on Falmouth Heights. It's being held on the west side of the casino, we don't man it, there's signs there that say no lifeguard on duty, there's no cars involved, no parking. So for that reason, and that is the reason I said this, this is not going to impact anybody, so I thought I'd ask for your approval of that. If it was on Falmouth Heights Beach, now you're talking a different story.
And I'll go along with it because, but I will say that these folks have said they've got means to get them there, but ultimately, if we continue to do these weddings at this location, they'll be parking at the Falmouth Heights Beach parking lot and walking up, because there is no additional parking in Falmouth Heights unless you live there. So it will be a strain like we...
This may be the second one since I've been here.
Okay.
On that particular beach, it's...
I've gone to two weddings here in the last three years.
As I, as we discussed, it's a toughie to reach, you've got to go down those stairs, and it's tougher to get up the stairs too, so if Grandma or Grandpa are going to see this wedding, it's going to be tough for them to...
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hopper. Next up is approved request for a special agricultural liquor license. This is for a wine vineyard, and I just wanted to disclose, on the hold of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. So do I, does anyone on the board want to make the motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. The next one up is request, approved request for a special agricultural liquor license, Westport Rivers. Again, an special agricultural liquor license for disclosure purposes, on the hold of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. So do I have a motion from the board?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is seasonal licenses. I'm going to take some, and then I'm going to recuse myself, so for disclosure purposes, on the hold of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. The first ones I'll take up is the alcoholic seasonal club license. So do I have a motion on that? Falmouth Yuck Club?
Move approval.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Wine and malt inholders licenses, well, just one of those, Beach Rose Inn, do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it. Bowling alley, Ryan Family Amusements?
Move approval.
Motion? Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it. Inholder, again, Beach Rose Inn.
Move approval.
Motion? Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh-oh. Next up is lodging house licenses. We have one, we have five of them. Bailey's by the Sea, The Captain's Manor, Captain Tom Lawrence, Grandview Guest House, Inn on the Sound. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it. Next up is secondhand dealer's license, Cape Cod Pickers in Auction, Emerald House Thrift Shop, Falmouth Stamp and Coin, Hanus Jewelers, Home Again Consignments, Inn on the Sound, Uncle Bill's Country Store.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both? The ayes have it. Again, the next three items we have is all-alcoholic restaurant licenses, common vixxer licenses, and entertainment licenses.
I hate to, I hate to take us back one step. Didn't we already approve the application for the secondhand dealer's license for stamp and coin in earlier action?
Yes, we did. I don't know why it ended up on both of them, but it's redundant.
Sorry.
Okay, so I'm going to recuse myself because there are, one of the, one of the licensees is the restaurant that I and my wife own, and the other is a close proximity to my restaurant. So I'm going to turn the chair over to the vice chairman to do those three.
Thank you.
All right, we have all-alcoholic restaurant, Landfall Restaurant, and Shuckers.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have common vixxer, Beach Rose Inn, Falmouth Yacht Club, Landfall Restaurant, and Shuckers.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And entertainment license, Landfall Yacht Club, oh, excuse me, Falmouth Yacht Club, Landfall Restaurant, and Shuckers.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And that completes item number eight.
Okay, thank you very much. There are two items that the board needs to discuss. They're not on the agenda, but the board needs to be aware that they're somewhat, one of them is somewhat time-sensitive. They're both somewhat time-sensitive. One is a remand from the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission in regard to.
Murphy's Package.
Murphy's Package. I'm looking for the actual name of it, Murphy's Package Store, and they were seeking for a location change to West Falmouth. The ABCC has remanded the matter back to the Board of Selectmen with the recommendation that the application be granted. The ABCC acknowledges that the Board of Selectmen still holds the authority to impose reasonable conditions on the granting of the application. Under General Law 138 S 67, the Board of Selectmen must take action on the remand within five days of receiving the decision. This requires that the Board of Selectmen set a date for the hearing on the remand. We need sufficient time to advertise this, either April 22nd or April 29th, and set in motion the notice requirements. The notice is the same as an original license or alter license change or location change. So we would have to advertise as we would any other license. So just to let the board know that we would set the date for April the 29th for the.
Do we know that the applicant's still interested, and part of it was based on a lease?
Yes, the applicant has contacted the office and is in fact pursued.
Okay.
Okay? So just, just so that the public is aware that we will put that back on the 29th. The other item that I wanted to bring to the attention of the board is, I had been in contact with town council, and there was some question in regard to my actions in a liquor license hearing for the Seacoast Shores Association Clubhouse. Although I follow the letter of, would be, would be considered the letter of the law, there's a provision in the general law which directly addresses the issue of General Law 39A, which provides that a member of the board conducting an adjunct hearing or acting upon the permit of a license application shall not be disqualified from the voting of the matter in the reason of, by reason of absence from one session of the hearing at which testimony is received, provided that before the vote, the member certified that he has examined all evidence received at the missed session, and such certification is part of the record in the hearing. However, I must add that the town of Falmouth has never adopted this regulation in the state. It was my thoughts that the town had adopted this. So we need to notify the applicant that the vote will stand at a 2-2 tie, and that my vote would be disqualified. So I was remiss, and I followed the law, but I didn't realize that the town of Falmouth had never adopted this section of the law. So we could do so in future town meetings, but so the board's knowledge, the application would not advance, we'll have to notify them. There are a couple of areas that the board needs to be aware of, that the applicant can wait a year to reapply, or can ask the Board of Selectmen for relief, and the Board of Selectmen can take a vote on whether to allow a new application before the year's period of time.
Is there any way that we can continue the hearing and reconsider it on our own? Because we didn't know that your vote was not.
No, unfortunately, they have to start the entire process over. So they'd have to do the regular advertising of the licenses, reapply for the license from the beginning. So, but the first step would be, if they in fact want to do that, the first step would be that they would apply to this board, ask this board to take up whether or not we would allow them to, to circumvent the one-year waiting period.
Do they have the option of doing the one-day licenses as they did this past?
Yes, they do, but there is a problem. If they apply for the one-day licenses, they have a pending, they have pending licenses, and then they cannot apply for the regular license. So that's a choice that they'll have to make. Did you have something?
No, I was just going to say that that's the Mullen Law, and, and we've taken.
That is, that's right.
It's called the Mullen Law. We've taken that up with the Cape Cod Commission, and we have, we're still going over it, but we have a copy of the whole law, and then we also have a copy of the certification form that the person who was not there, like yourself, certifies that I have seen the video, I have read the minutes, I have done this and that, and you sign it, and that that allows you then to participate. And considering the number of hearings, that sometimes we have conservation liquor license hearings and others, it might be worth our while. I have copies of that, which I'm happy to bring in, that we're using. We haven't actually done it yet, but it's really important, because when you have legal hearings like that, and sometimes you, you want to come back and participate, and if you meet the requirements under that Mullen Law, then you're able to do it.
The town, the town has to adopt that, that specific part.
That, that section of the general laws. That's right. But now, let's get back to, but we can deal with that later. I can bring the stuff in, and you can look at it if you want. But back to this, to the license, the applicant for the license that now they, Seacoast Shores, that's what it was, right?
We will, we'll notify, the office, after I spoke to town council, will notify the applicant tomorrow, and the applicant makes his, their options are, to move forward.
I would think so.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to the ABCC decision on the Murphy's Package Store, in years past, the board had discussed but declined to implement any sort of meeting or hearing procedures, and I would like the board to reconsider that and perhaps sit down and look at the draft that we previously had, if not develop a draft. One of the concerns I have in particular, aside from the ABCC remand, is that this evening we had conducted another hearing with regard to the dock. One of the things in the ABCC decision discussed the fact that findings were not established. And we may have the same problem this evening with respect to the denial of the dock, in that when we make a denial under a hearing process, we have to make findings of fact, and we have to provide explanations as to why we are denying. We may have a problem with the denial of the dock this evening, because there was really no discussion about why the dock was denied. There was simply a vote taken. And so for that reason, I'd like the board, if we could get on a future agenda, a discussion and perhaps establishment of some hearing procedures so that we don't run into these situations again.
Do you have a draft of what you're speaking of?
Yes.
Be happy to disseminate it to the board, and we can take a look at it.
I'd be happy to.
And I think council can just, I mean, it's in the general laws, so it's just a matter of putting it into everyday English language, and, and just, it's really more of a reminder. I think we know what our responsibilities are under a hearing, but maybe a few little English sentences other than the, the general law to remind us occasionally of what the, what the components of a hearing are, and what thing, what items that the board should take, be aware of. And it's different for each kind of a license.
And town council brought up one of the good, you know, item number two in the Conservation Commission, what they, you know, we maybe want to make that as part of our motions from now on, that we're not inferring any property rights.
Right.
So those might be some.
Oh, yeah.
The town council tonight suggested if we make a motion in regard to that, that we infer no property, property rights to either, either party. So we'll, if you get us that, we'll talk about it and send it to council, and he might have some, some suggestions. Okay? With that being said, we'll move to the town, so folks know that the 29th, we will look to do the remand, and then we'll also notify the Seacoast Shores Association of their license. Town managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few, a few items of update. On Wednesday, March 20th, I attended and participated in the Falmouth Forum hosted by the Old Stone Dock Association at Shoreway Acres. I was joined by several staff colleagues who also participated, Mark Sullivan, Ed Dunn, Don Hoffer, Peter McConerty, and Ray Jack, and it was a fascinating process that has received some publicity. On Thursday, March 21st, and Friday, March 22nd, I attended the 2013 ICMA Northeast Regional Summit held in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper also attended. This summit included a very insightful seminar presented on local government leadership. We're pleased to be able to attend. As the board is aware, each year, the town has a limited amount of State Chapter 90 funds to invest in roadway-related projects, and I've transmitted a copy of a letter from Town Engineer Peter McConerty, providing a summary of the several roadway sidewalking related projects that we would anticipate if all goes as, ideally as anticipated, that could conceivably be undertaken with those limited Chapter 90 funds. We do continue to hope that the state will make further Chapter 90 funding available so that municipalities like Falmouth can undertake even further, a larger number of these local projects. Also, members of the board, the printed booklet for the April Annual and Special Town Meetings has returned from the printer, was mailed out to town meeting members last week. I think the board has received your copies as well, as have town meeting members should have received their copies by now. And also, along those same lines, as a reminder, the town meeting precinct meetings begin this week, kicking off with, I believe, three precincts this Wednesday, March 27th, and additional precinct on Thursday the 28th, continuing the following week on Wednesday and Thursday, April 3rd and 4th. And as the boards are aware, we make every effort to have a board and manager's office represented at each one of these precinct meetings to answer any questions that members may have who are able to attend. With three meetings on this Wednesday, that challenge will be a little bit more daunting than, than normal. We're used to two on one night, but three is going to be a little more challenging, and I would just say we appreciate precinct members' patience with us as we move from precinct meeting to precinct meeting, where we do have multiple ones on the same evening. And that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Brent, did you have something?
Just, first of all, I recommend that perhaps the board coordinate who's going to show up at which precinct meetings Wednesday. Thursday, because there is just one precinct meeting, just to remind the board that Mr. Jones and myself, we're still meeting with the Capitol Advisory Committee, and so we won't be available for that precinct meeting. Hopefully, another member.
Does someone have this precinct meeting schedule here with?
I do. Well, I have it in my calendar. Wednesday, I have precinct seven, eight, and nine are meeting. Precinct seven at Wacoit, and eight and nine at the Fairgrounds.
I'll be at eight and nine.
It's really only two meetings. It's.
Yeah, there's two meetings.
I'll be at precinct seven since it's mine.
Yeah, I'll do seven, too.
Okay.
And the next night, it's.
The next night is precinct three.
At Gus Canty.
At Gus Canty.
Yeah.
I can make that one.
Yeah, I can make three. And then the next week.
On Wednesday.
Is Wednesday is precinct four.
East Falmouth School.
And, and on the fourth is precincts one and two, and precincts five and six.
I'll be at one and two.
I'll be five and six.
I've got five and six, too, right, so.
I just discovered on the captain.
Okay. Can't get rid of that job, can you?
We, I have a, a meeting penciled in for that night for us, Thursday the 4th.
Right.
Yeah, 6 o'clock.
6 p.m.
What time? 6 o'clock.
6 p.m. Hopefully, we'll have some information from the state by then.
I can do precinct four on Wednesday the 3rd.
I'll be there also.
You will?
Okay, that's great.
I'll do four, too.
Okay.
Try to get to as many as possible.
And, and sorry for my notes on Thursday, precincts one and two, five and six, you were going to be doing that, Pat.
And I'll do one and two.
Okay, that's right, Joe.
And then just a couple, just the scheduling notes, remember, on both the week of the first, we'll meet on Monday, and then we have that meeting on Wednesday. We have town meeting on the 8th and 9th, and we'll set the ballot on the 11th at 6 p.m. 6 p.m., all right, Brent? Can you do that?
Yeah, I can do.
You can do six?
Yeah. Then why are we meeting on the 4th? Oh, that's because we have to.
We have the state, the, the, the.
The state's response.
The state's response, and then we're going to make our final recommendations that evening, so that we can go to the press, because Chris has told us that he'd be able to get it in that Friday edition.
Oh, okay.
Are you scheduling meetings, are you posting meetings prior to a town meeting on the 8th and 9th?
We'll, we'll post meetings in both, both nights, that's right. And then we'll go to individual, Julian, are you done with your report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Individual selectmen reports, and just make a couple of things. Mr. Suso and I were able to attend a luncheon since our last group with St. Elizabeth Seaton Women's and Men's Guild, and that was a lively question-and-answer section on the 13th. I had an opportunity to participate in the mayor's for meals in the town, which was on last Wednesday. I know you folks appreciate the rest of you attending the Old Stone Dock Group, but it was a, it's a neat initiative where you actually go out with the folks, delivering the meals on wheels, and you get to see and have that experience, greet the folks that, that are receiving them. Surely goes a long way to say that there's a need in this community, and our elders in this community sure look forward to sometimes getting a nutritious hot meal for the, for that particular day. Some of them get them actually eight, seven days a week, which, which is a great undertaking by all the volunteers. Had an interview today with the Falmouth Housing Study, and it's kind of a little recap[1727.51] Had an interview today with the Falmouth Housing Study, and it's kind of a little recap of the stuff I've been doing the last week.
I just want to quickly commend Mr. Suso and the rest of the staff with the Old Stone Dock Association presentation. They did a fantastic job, and if there's any way we could sort of put that out on tour, would be a huge benefit before town meeting, just the kind of questions they were able to answer, and make some very clear presentations. But it was a good two hours of tough work for the staff, who just did a great job with it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
David?
If I may have a few minutes, Mr. Chairman.
You sure can, it's early today.
Well, I have a couple months' worth here, and it'll probably be my, you know, last extensive report before I leave office in May. But I just want to go back to January 24th. I attended the Affordable Housing Meeting. There was discussion of the St. Mark's, Stevens Lane, Glenwood Place, Odd Fellows Hall. And the only thing that had come in on Odd Fellows Hall was, they received, I guess, estimates for the abatement of lead paint was $110,000, which is concerning to them. On the 31st of January, I attended a training for two hours with the ZBA and Planning Board, put on by Mr. Curry. It was relative to responsibilities of the members of each committee. I found it very interesting. On the 5th, I attended the, February 5th, the HDC meeting relative to 40 Main Street. As you know, the porches were taken off, there was some question about legality of it being done. I had received a couple calls, I had gone to Julian about it, because we don't really get involved in that. He came back to me and said after an investigation, two things were found, one document falsified, and they put a stop-work order on the job. It is now, as you can see, continued. I had attended on the same day the Solid Waste Meeting. There was just discussion, Ruth had been to a Capitol Advisory Committee meeting, and there were comments made, and she was just forwarding a letter to them relative to some figures, I guess, that they wanted. The same night, I went to planning, it's not my committee, so don't be insulted, but I wanted to hear what they had to say about sober houses. There was quite the conversation about that. On February 6th, I attended another meeting, which is not mine, with the Conservation Commission, because I wanted to hear the discussion of the ramp being donated on Silver Beach by the Gallagher family, whose son lost his life in the military. Also, I attended a meeting, which was not my liaison, on the 6th of February, the bike ways, because I wanted to hear the discussion of the seven two-foot-by-three-foot signs that are being prepared to be go on the bike path. These are solar signs to model the distances of the planets from the sun. And there was also a discussion of a bike rodeo coming up this year at Lawrence School. I did attend one of my meetings on the February 7th, which was a discussion of rate increases at the Cable Advisory. They really are concerned that they need two more members. And I know we have a lot of, I've explained to them all the openings we have on different committees, that they've been posted, but we're just not getting any takers, but they are having difficulty getting a quorum. Believe it or not, I had another issue, someone had called me about a house tear down at 10 Middle Street in Woods Hole. I again went to Julian with it. Investigation was done, there was a stop-work order put in, and that was all taken care of, really beyond my purview. On March 7th, I attended one of my zoning board meetings. The most interesting thing on that evening was I opened up a hearing into the Anderson Appeal, but it was continued. Actual testimony was taken on March 7th, and it has now been set, I think it's May 2nd. There was testimony, but it was hit 9:30 at night when they do the cutoff, so that meeting has not been, has continued to May 2nd, I think it is. I did a tour of this building with, a couple weeks ago, with Tom Pucci, who had come forward after we had seen the article in The Enterprise about my concern about getting town council and the town building. Julian agreed to the tour. It did explain that Heather and the personnel director will be handling this after the town meeting is complete. But I would say, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Julian, but it was very eye-opening even to me to realize a space that's upstairs that's just not being utilized properly. Julian is also looking into one of my other concerns, which is the $7,200 in marijuana tickets that are sitting in the clerk's office that are going unpaid. Chief Dunn, who I actually spoke with about it the other day, is looking into it to see how the towns are handling it. There is one town that has 1,500 of them. If you can imagine that revenue just sitting there. That is because when the law was passed, there was no stipulation put in how to enforce it if someone did not pay the $100. In this case, since it's civil, it has to be done by a constable. I also received a call at my home, and I went to visit this property that we own on John Parker Road, which is infested with rats. This is a little house just off John Parker Road. I forwarded pictures to Julian about it. It's the bog house, I guess, where the person who took care of the bogs lived in. It is all boarded up, since burnt, and the neighbor called me out front because her house is getting infested with rats, which are coming out of that building, and I did witness the rats. Julian's aware of that. I will continue for the next six or seven weeks that I'm in office to really work hard for the Affordable Housing Beach Committee, Council on Aging, Zoning Board, and Cable, to do what I can to, right up to the last minute. I want to thank Julian, because I know he's helped me with a lot of issues that I consider day-to-day, that normally a selectman would not get involved in, but he has been pretty good about it, and I would say that everything I have done has been for the taxpayer. Hence, I have discussed the issue of town council moving. Also, I've mentioned a few times about the Messina Fund. Hopefully someday, it'll be opened up, not only for the ramp, if it can be used for that, which I believe it can, according to town council, but to be used for maintenance, the license agreement has to be reopened, and in a few years, and that beach gets to be renourished. I'm hoping we can use the 20,000 to 30,000 out of that fund to do so. Mr. Chairman, that completes my report, and I want to thank you very much for the time.
Are you trying to tell us, Ford, something, and we got your seat on the board?
Correct. Life changes, Mr. Chairman, and I've had, I'll just go into it thus far, that back in October, as you know, I left the police department two years ago. Two things happened in October. I got this tremendous blood clot in my right leg, which I just got cleared of Friday, actually, and I was offered two positions, one at Otis as an armed guard at the gate, second, Chief Riallo, and as is known, Julian's aware of all this, offered my job back on the police department, but everything sort of fell apart. At this point, both options are open to me. There's a lot of steps I've got to take, if it is the town job again, but as of right now, my life is changing in a different direction, and I, although I will tell you, I've enjoyed this for three years, just really beginning to learn the budget process, and I consider I've met very wonderful friends in the process, and, but I just feel it would not be fair to me to try to do what I want to do, and I would not, in no way, be able to give 100% to this job. But I do want to thank everybody for your patience. Times when I may have made a mistake, and I've been corrected, I've learned by them, and, but, you know, I have seven weeks or so to go, and I'm going to do my due diligence right up to the last minute. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I'm just surprised, and I just want to say how nice it was having you for three years, David, truly.
It's been a pleasure.
You've been very diligent about your, about your work, and very collaborative, and it's just been a pleasure working with you.
It has been also for me. Thank you very much.
You bring a lot of heart to the job, David, and folks know that you care, and have always been able to see that. And civility is one of your best virtues as well.
Thank you very much.
I hate to say this, but I do have one thing to say, that last Saturday, I attended the annual breakfast meeting of the Human Rights Commission of Pleasantville County, and it's a fabulous group of people. Kathy Schatzberg, who is the former president of Cape Cod Community College, received their award this year for all of her work in social justice and economic justice, and they are looking for members, and they would love to have somebody from Falmouth on the commission. So if you are interested, the commission members are appointed by the county commissioners, so you can make your interests known, you can even make them known to me, or to write a letter, and we'd be happy to interview you and consider you for a place on the Human Rights Commission, so.
Anybody else? Look for a motion to adjourn.
It's removed.
Second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both? Aye, seven. Thank you.